Welcome everyone to our February 28th regular meeting. Let's call the meeting to order at 6:31 maybe?
Yes.
And the first item on the agenda is to approve the minutes from the regular meeting held on February 14th, 2023 and the special meetings held on February 13th, 2023 and February 17th, 2023.
I make a motion to approve these three meetings, February 14th, February 13th, and February 17th.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, audience of citizens, I see we have a few citizens here. What do we have to talk about?
I have a question. On the special meeting that we had on the 14th, what was the specific litigation?
14th was the regular meeting.
The special meeting?
Special meeting was on the 13th and the 17th. Okay, I have those minutes in front of me, I believe.
What's the executive session for the litigation?
Right, right, there's a lawsuit. We had one of our town crew or one of the people working on sidewalks, it was during a snowstorm back in January, I think January of last year.
Last year.
Yep, there was a small fuel spill. Cumberland Farms blamed it on our worker, our worker blamed it on the equipment of the gas pump. Cumberland Farms is suing us for the cost of the cleanup.
I was curious about it and I did notice that we had a lawsuit, a second lawsuit filed in January, Hajek against the town.
Who?
I may not be pronouncing the name correctly, Hajek, H-A-J-E-K.
Hayek?
Hayek, Hajek?
I don't know.
I don't know.
Hayek is the economist, there's at once in the town and the color company for a tree. It's a hubset at the back of a library.
The Truman?
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
The Truman.
Yep.
And so I thought that was what the special meeting, I didn't know.
No, that was the second lawsuit.
So I guess my question on that one is, do we have liability insurance that can cover that as a town? And that's just going to be matter of course?
Well, it won't be matter of course, a fellow got pretty seriously injured. The question is, you know, who's at fault? It was a tree that was on private property and all that kind of thing.
So then back to the first one, on the oil spill, when they threw the discussion regarding the, some sort of settlement, is there a special fund for that or does that process have to go to the board of finance and then to the town meeting?
Well, we're gonna let the attorneys work it out and then once we have a number or we're not, however the attorneys work that out, we will have to go to the board of finance and the town meeting.
Thank you.
Hopefully it's less than, less than the amount of money that we need to do that. We do have legal, we do have a line in our budget for legal, so.
Great, thank you.
Motion.
Anybody else?
Is there a number on that lawsuit across the street?
Um, yes, there is. We voted to negotiate, to negotiate with them up to 11,000.
Two ninety-seven.
Yeah, two hundred and ninety-seven or seven hundred and ninety-seven, something like that, yeah. Just shy of twelve thousand. Which is what they're claiming is the cost of the, of the cleanup. So there's no extra money in there. Anybody else? Okay. Next on the agenda is appointments, Parks and Recreation Commission. Suzanne Kapecki such has been recommended and has volunteered to join. We've had a nice rash of folks that are joining the Parks and Rec, so if you guys would go so far.
I'll make a motion to appoint Susan Kapecki such for Park and Recreation Commission, term to expire 12/1, 2025.
I second that motion.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is actually two items, Meyer Road and Buckingham Road, discussing impossible action. We'll go over Meyer Road now. You guys are, I think I mentioned this to you all earlier when we first got a phone call. I did some research, spoke with our town attorney. Remember, what this is, is a small section.
At least it's a.
Yeah, well, no, this, this kind of matches up with.
Oh, okay, I got you, it goes, yeah.
Now, we're gonna, I don't know if you can zoom in on this, but we're gonna describe it. Anyway, this Route 145, before it became Route 145, or maybe it was Route 145, but when they straightened out this corner here, this was part of the state road. When they straightened it out, they have abandoned it to the town. The town never accepted it as a road. The town never did any improvements.
Because it was never used as a road.
It was never used as a road.
School bus turn around.
Right.
Yep, and at one point the fish and game club that rented that piece of property had a gate across here.
Okay, well, so the town owns it, but it's not a road, so we don't necessarily have to abandon it. The conversation really comes down to the new owner of the property here has asked if we can relinquish the ownership to him and to the property owner on the other side, which is Baptist Church.
The Baptist Church owns this little sliver?
Yep.
Oh, jeez.
Well, when this, before this road came in, this was all one piece, now it got split.
That'll be darned.
And then whatever happens with it, happens with it. But what, what normally happens when a road is abandoned or discontinued is fifty percent of the road, I mean, goes to the property owner on either side of it. So what I'm suggesting to you all, and we'll have to go to town meeting, it's town property, we can't just decide to do it, but we'll go to a town meeting and suggest that we abandon the ownership or discontinue the ownership of what used to be known as Old Meyer Road or Route 145. To the owners on either side. We don't, we don't use it now, nobody uses it now, it's not of any use, we don't, we don't or never have maintained it. So I don't see any, any issues with it, I don't know if either of you see anything.
I remember being a little kid, this being built.
There you go.
Yeah, but.
The only difference, not so much the church side, but the other side, that would increase his value to his property?
Well, what it does is, he uses this now as his access, this is where his frontage is on this property. So he drives it, would it, would it increase the value of it? Maybe, it might actually, might, he's gonna have to do some sort of dealing with the Baptist Church because he's only gonna own fifty percent of the road. So when you abandon those kind of things, you can't extinguish rights. So he's got rights to go over that to his property. And really all it's doing is giving him control over fifty percent of it. I imagine, you know, you can imagine what might happen, he might swap something out with the Baptist Church and get all of it. And that would give him frontage on 145, but.
Does he have plans for the property as he comes?
As I know, right now, he's using it as a, as a recreation place for him and his family. Brings the kids up, they go out to the pond and go fishing and do some hiking and all that kind of thing.
Because it's a large parcel.
No, it's almost all acres, yeah, no, it's a nice piece, but it's a very difficult piece. There was a fellow that wanted to put affordable housing out there. He was gonna build some concrete homes and it's interesting, but he never got past the soils testing in the wetlands, it's a considerable amount of wetlands, there's a considerable amount of rock. Before this fellow purchased it, there was another folk, fellow who wanted to divide it into five lots for, for his family, you know, a lot for each of his kids, like a little compound. And, and this, this fellow might go that direction too.
Okay.
But, you know, I'm suggesting that we take this to a town meeting.
This is a state road, that that was state and they gave it up and it was long gone, I just, you know, that's what happens when you assume, obviously.
Need a motion to bring this, or we're gonna do it?
Well, we can do that, but what I'm gonna ask you is maybe, let's, let's table this conversation for now, let me get the proper language from the attorney, whether it's an abandonment or discontinuization or whatever it is, but to relinquish the ownership of it. Let me get that language and we can bring that to a town meeting next time.
Okay.
I don't know if the camera can zoom in on this or not, but this is up on the north end of Route 145. Or, yeah, north end of Route 145, where Old Meyer Road is the name of it. And it used to be where 145 went through, I don't know if you can see that or not.
Yeah, a little bit.
There you go.
I call it, I call it the wide section. When they widen that room from this to wide, that's why I personally call it the wide section.
Turn the bus wrong.
That's what it is, where it used to turn the bus. All right, thanks. This, next one is Buckingham Road, and we've spoken about this before, we've done a lot of research on this over the course of the last few months. And what we find right now, this Buckingham Road is owned by the town, well, I don't actually even think it is owned by the town. But it was, we need to have some, some more work done on it research wise, but it, the town never accepted it as a town road. So we've been maintaining this road up until right about here.
This is River, right?
This is River Road here?
This is River, yeah, okay.
We've been paving and plowing up until the end of this road. This survey was done a couple of years ago and that shows the end of the, end of the pavement. There's a house going in right here. But what I'm suggesting to you and then to the town is that we accept, let's have the attorney again, figure out the language, but we accept this road up and up to the end of the development. This guy's, this guy owns here, we can accept it to here. And then relinquish, we, we don't, we don't, we, I don't know if we own it or not, but we definitely, it's not, it's not been accepted as a road. So we're not abandoning a road that I can tell, but again, we're relinquishing ownership.
But you said we're not, you're not sure if the town owns it?
I'm not sure, my research doesn't show that it ever got deeded to the town, but it was part of a subdivision that was done back a long, long time ago. And as part of that subdivision, ownership on either side of it was relinquished, you know, sold off lots.
And part of this is, isn't there part of the land trust?
The land trust owns on either side of it.
Okay, that's what I thought, without my glasses on here.
My only question is if we're taking care of it up to here and we don't know if it's our road or not, correct?
Well, that's.
Why would we want more road to take care of?
Well, we actually don't, and that's, that's part of the question, maybe we should have land trust in here to talk about that. Land trust wants to use this to access this hiking. Now, we could talk with them about maybe doing that, building another, answer access off of River Road, but this is a pretty good hill. And this is what they were hoping to do. So I don't wanna build, we're not gonna build a road through here.
Well, yeah, that was.
Is that paved now or dirt?
No, this is just gravel. You can see where there's a walkway that comes back here, but it's not, it's not a driveway at all. The pavement ends right here. This fellow wants us to build it up here.
Right.
But no, we're not gonna pave anymore. If we, if we end down here, that's okay with me, but I'd like to try to, I like the idea. This, this land trust property connects to other land trust here, this is a really nice little greenway, that walk that goes right through over to, I think it goes all the, almost all the way to Rattling Valley. So it's a nice, near stretch of land, if they could get some place to park.
So you're, you're thinking of yourself, if we went all the way to here, would you wanna pave that or just keep it gravel?
No, no, I would just, I would suggest that we just clean it enough for land trust to, to, to use it as a place to come up here for the little parking spot. But I would never, I would never ask the town to pave that.
Well, that's why I'm asking, because I, I wanna support town.
No, I would never ask for that.
We have all the roads that need help.
Yeah, so the, so the, going back to the ownership, there's questions as to the ownership of the whole road?
The whole strip of land, I am not confident.
That we even, the town even owns the part that we're kind of making, maintaining now? And if it's, if we don't, then this is a moot point.
Well, there's an interesting, interesting thing about that, we don't have all of that research done here. We've been maintaining this for an extended period of time.
Forever, probably.
Since it was, since it was, they started building houses over here. The, we, we get money from the state every year for roads that we maintain, and that's based on the amount of mileage or square footage of road. This, the state has us, as this road is being 170 feet long, 170 feet goes about to here. It's, it's no, so somehow or another, this, years ago, this became something that we maintained. I think there's, there's really two ways we can go about it, we can abandon the whole thing, make this just a nice driveway, and these folks, it becomes their own responsibility, which I don't think is really the responsible thing to do. We've been maintaining that, acting it, using it as if it's been a town road.
Regardless of the ownership.
Regardless of the ownership.
Right.
I think that it's easy enough for us to, for our attorney to do better research than I've done, more complete research than I've done, and determine whether or not this got handed to the town during the transaction of the subdivision or not. It was never accepted by the town, that much I do know. So the idea really is to have a conversation, get it in, back in your heads about whether it come up to here so that land trust will have access and land trust will take ownership of this, except for here, this will become part of what used to be Jaffeian system. And I guess still is.
Is there parking spots up here currently or not?
No, no, that'd be something that the land trust will have to work out on her own, really.
Or make it.
Make it something a couple cars can come up here.
Yeah, it's perfect access to the property.
It is.
If you're not gonna take the park up there, what's the sense of that?
Exactly, exactly, yep. And then to have them, if they, if it didn't have, you know, to construct it, it was like, or even construct a little finger with a park on it, that's, you know, when you've already got it.
So again, we don't have to have any, take any action today, I'm not sure we can actually take any action, we need to add, get a couple more questions, but I wanna hand both of these over to the attorney, get the proper language, the proper description of what we need to do, and then bring it back to you in a week or two or three.
Good.
Okay?
Okay, very good.
Easy peasy. Next item on the agenda is Mislik Drive, status Nicholas Olson. And Nick has called, one of our selectmen, and said he's not gonna make it today, really he just wanted to know the status, the status is at the, is at the attorney's, you know, we voted to sell it, we need to bring it to town meeting again.
To get permission from the.
Yeah, get permission. From the population of the town, it's town property, if we're going to sell it, we're going to sell it. The attorney is not, is working out, you know, number one, a couple of good descriptions as to how we can sell it, if we can give it to a real estate agent or just sell it on our own. I think we decided we'd like to do this as some sort of an auction type thing where, you know.
Seal bid.
Seal bid, yeah.
No, not an auction, a sealed bid.
Sealed bid offers. And the last bit of that is, I kinda thought that we could, we're gonna have a raft of town meetings in the next few months, as months move progress. And I thought we could do the property ones all at the same time, so we can work on all of those and move them all together.
Makes sense, yep.
All right, that's that information. I have nothing else on the agenda, you guys have anything to talk about?
We talked earlier, the only thing, maybe next month or something, we can have, I see Carol here, maybe report on the food scraps, how it's working?
Yeah, that's a great idea.
An idea, rough.
Rough or sustainable?
Yeah, yeah. Just, you know, I'm curious. Somebody else probably not eating, it was probably the dump people, but you're, you're a CT, sustainable.
Oh, that's, that's a good idea, and I think part of sustainable charge is to actually make reports quarterly to us, so maybe we'll, we'll talk with Sarah, who's the new chair, Sarah Connor's the new chair over there, and we can ask them to come to a nice meeting.
Absolutely.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have numbers, it's been a month tomorrow.
There's a lot of buckets up there, I want their son to go.
I, I can report this, that Blue Earth is the group that, that's taking the scraps, they have, their comment was, this is fastest that any program like this has grown, they went from four buckets to ten buckets, and they've ordered, put on order a large container.
Good, that's good.
It's, it's, it's successful as far as I can tell. We'll, we'll see, if, if the numbers prove to be what, what, what they look like, then it'll be substantial savings for us.
Good.
So that's good.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
I get the, the green food scraps process and why we're doing that, what is the purpose of the orange bags?
You're the second person to ask me that. The orange bags is for later on in the program. If in fact the town determines that this is a good thing for the community and votes to do it, the orange bags will be a way that we can determine that, that the proper bags are going in, into the, into the thing. And it's actually, they were part of a bigger program for bigger communities or different programs where it's almost part of a pay as you throw kind of thing, the orange bags distinguish what they are. But for now, it's really just to show that, okay, I'm participating, this is what it is, and they're free, so, and just to get folks, I think we're, I asked the question after someone asked me, and what was explained to me by Waste Zero, who are the group that are working with the DEEP, is that it's, this whole process is, is about changing folks' habits, and by using a special bag, it kinda gets you in the routine of using the special bag and paying attention to what you're doing, so that's, that's it, we're anything, and they're kind of cool. That's it for me, make a motion to.
Make a motion, we adjourned it.
Six fifty-two.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks.
Good evening, everyone, this is the regular meeting, regular February 2023 meeting of the Deep River Board of Finance. First item on our agenda, and I never give it proper reverence, called to order, this meeting is called to order. Second item on our agenda is the approval of our regular January meeting and our special Valentine Day meeting. Does anyone wish to suggest we approve those meetings?
Some would.
Second.
And a second, all right. All those in favor, anyone wish to discuss it? All those in favor? Thank you. The third item is we have a, a visitor, John Colmworth with us.
Rich.
He is, he is going to answer questions that several members of the board had pertaining to the Deep River Ambulance Association's request for ARPA funds. Now, we can do this in a couple ways, we could just have respond to the questions. Could you give us sort of a brief overview on why you need the ARPA funds, what you intend to do?
So right now, we have a Dodge Pro Series 2016 van style ambulance that served us very well over the last couple of years now. And what it has is a Inferno Stryker stretcher in the back, which is a manual stretcher, you have to pull it out, you have to hold it with a patient, push the button, lower the legs, it needs two people to hold it. That ambulance was only able to fit that size stretcher in there, so we're looking to get funds to buy a ambulance that's set up for a Stryker power load unit, which is a hands-free 750 pound stretcher unit that you pull out and basically holds itself up, you push a button to lower, so there's no back injury potentially or anything like that. The 2016 Dodge Pro Series that we have right now is not set up for cross member wise in the frame to support that kind of stretcher unit in the back. So we're requesting some funds as well as the ambulance putting towards the new purchase of another van style ambulance, all wheel drive, that's capable of supporting this Stryker stretcher in the back. That's similar to the one, actually almost the same as the one that's in our Big River ambulance, which is five four, which is a van E four fifty, you know.
That is interesting. Is there a, we, the fire department will tell us that there's often change in standards for what they are required to use. Is there standards that are applied to your industry, your businesses?
I don't have the answer to that, but, you know, I know the stretchers are pretty standard, the Stryker stretcher is a pretty standard stretcher that's out on the market, Stryker and Inferno are both good competitive stretchers, we prefer to like the Stryker itself, but I, I, there is some standards that the triple K, you know, ambulance specs do fall under, but when it comes to stretchers, it's up to the organization what they choose to put in that stretcher, so.
Do you have two ambulances now?
We do have two ambulances.
Do you have two ambulances now?
We do, most certainly, yeah.
So you'll have three?
No, no, we will, we will sell or trade the 2016, which has low miles on it right now, so we could probably get a, a pretty good amount for it, so we will not have three ambulances, we'll always have two. We only have the PSA in our service here in Deep River for two ambulances right now, so we can't add one, we could add one, but it's a lot of paperwork, but we will only have two, so we'll be replacing one.
Could you remind us of the cost and someone will fill in how much the town is providing in ARPA funds and how you will get the remaining funds?
The remaining funds, I believe with my wife Jennifer, who can't be here tonight, she's traveling, went to the board of directors, had a special meeting, so I believe the town was gonna give us 150,000, we will offset the remaining balance to cover the costs of that ambulance with the trade as well, I think.
You know, we moved to 137, not 105.
Okay, sorry, correct, correct, I'm sorry about that.
And what funds, is this just general income you responded?
Yeah, fundraising, general income donations, we do a lot of fundraising, a lot of fundraising, so that's where it comes from.
Some of the proceeds from the ambulance that you will sell?
Correct.
And you, you're confident that that is, that is something you can do, you can raise adequate funds to pick up the difference?
Yes.
Yeah, we have a commitment from the Ambulance Association that, that, if this goes past the town meeting and gets approved, that they will commit to that purchase of, you know, funding the remainder.
Do you have to raise the funds before you acquire the new ambulance?
No.
You can pay that, the difference off over time, okay, excellent.
How long have you used both the ambulances?
Lately, a lot. Yeah, yeah, we've been, we've been filling our crews and staffing both ambulances, you know, just this last month and the month before, we've had multiple calls back to back and we're able to staff both ambulances at the same time, so we're very fortunate, we have a very good crew right now, that's a scramble crew plus, you know, shifts right now, so we do a really good job of, of staffing the both ambulances.
Is a lot of that mutual aid or just?
There is a fair amount of mutual aid, it has gotten better in our neighboring towns, they were able to get some staffing in, for a while there was, it was substantial, we were going to other towns, but, you know, they come to us too every now and then when we can't get a crew, so. One hand watches out for the other, so.
How do you define mutual aid? Some town calls their ambulance and they cannot respond and upon.
Yeah, Valley Shore, our dispatch center will, will pick the ambulance that's would be within reason, you know, close, so, to go to that town if they can't get a crew, so. So not only we're covering our own town, we're covering other towns as well as part of the Valley Shore Mutual Aid Agreement.
That's how the fire department works out.
Fire Department does the exact same thing, yeah.
Both the ambulances will be equally equipped, ALS?
Uh, we're a BLS service, not an ALS, the paramedic is.
Right.
Yeah, but they will be.
But the equipment.
Yes, yeah, the state plan, it, you know, regulates our ambulance, is what we have to have on an ambulance, and we go, we do an inspection every two years, state comes in and checks everything, expiration dates, all of our, even our stretcher units now, we've been proactive, we get them serviced every other year because they look for that sticker that says it's been serviced, so, you know, that's something that they started two years ago, so.
And what's the life cycle of the new ambulance and then what's the life cycle status of the existing ambulance you'd be keeping?
Um, we go as long as we can, I mean, I mean, we've had one that was.
How many miles, driven by miles or age of the?
It just depends how much money you wanna dump into it, so, I mean, our other ambulance, the 2018 Ford, why we bought the 2016 van was because our other ambulance was in the shop so often, we only had one ambulance, we were at its end, so we wound up buying a second ambulance while that one was out of service. We'll go until it costs us too much to maintain it, so, you know, probably, I mean, we can probably get an easy 100,000 miles out of an ambulance.
So is that like a 10 year?
Probably like 10 year, 100,000 or so, but our last ambulance was more than 10 years old, I believe, so.
And you did a refit on five four?
And we did a refit on five four, actually, so we chastened, it's basically the box on our five four ambulance is a 2006, but it's on a 2018 chassis, so it was a very substantial savings in taking the box off. so it was a a very substantial savings in taking the box off and re-chastening it, so we did save a lot of money there too as well, so.
Questions, Hugs?
And this system for the, that's pretty much the industry standard now.
Very much so.
Not ASM, they all have this, this system, so it's very common, very rarely do you see an ambulance that has the old fashioned stretcher left in them, so.
And then, and I might just say, the ambulance crew, there's a lot of females on the ambulance crew now.
Yeah, lately, there are.
And, you know, if I was to be on that stretcher, they'd need the power lift.
We're just, we're just worried about back injuries.
Yeah, it's an injury.
We still have to get the stretcher in the house, don't get it wrong, we still have to get the patient from the house to the ambulance, but it's one less step that we have to worry about, you know, we could just pull it out and let it do it all by itself. Um, you know, that's a huge savings, so. Inferno does make a similar stretcher unit, Essex has it, Jen's been talking to Judy, they're not very happy with it, it's very heavy, the stretcher itself, um, so that was something we were looking at, weight differences, so, that's why we kind of stick with the Stryker, and we have one already, so we have two of the exact same stretchers. The service rep can come in and do both ambulances at the same time. Right now, I have to have Inferno come in, you know, one week, and then next week, the Stryker guy comes in, now it's a one-stop shop, they can come and do both of them, so.
We had um a consultant for the fire department, I guess that's what he was going, oh, it wasn't though, uh, but he was sharing the, how do I want to set this up? The time, time lag, forward ordering time required to get a fire truck, um, years?
Four years.
Do you have similar, since it's a, it's a special, special vehicle?
That's a good question, I, I don't know the answer to that, but I think it may be probably a little bit less, only because we're buying a van that's already built from the factory. Fire trucks are built, correct me if I'm wrong, from the ground up, it's a cab chassis, and then the pump body's built and manufactured. Um, I could safely say we're probably maybe half that time, yeah.
But it's still, but it's, but it's still.
Still pretty expensive, yeah.
It's still a specific vehicle, right?
Yeah, yeah, I do know if we were to go with a Ford uh truck chassis, forward wrapped truck chassis, they're saying right now that's a three-year wait list right now for the truck chassis just itself. So I think the van may be a little bit on the shorter side, but, but I, but I don't know the answer to that, I apologize, so.
But once you order, you lock in on a price.
Correct.
Price increases.
So if this is approved, our meeting is on thirteenth of uh next month. Once is approved by the town, there's, they can begin to enter into an agreement or negotiate or, do you have to bid this out? What is, does the town govern that? Do you have your own rules, what?
Um, the Deep River Ambulance Association, they, they'll do it, we do it ourselves, because I mean, I don't believe we're connected to the town, so what we do.
It's one hundred percent.
It's one hundred percent non-tax and everything else, we can do our own, so, you know, we'll pick an ambulance manufacturer, we'll probably go with it, so. We try to price around, you know, to go with, you know, we have a couple of representatives that we've dealt with before. Um, I, I sat on the last committee for the Pro Series, I'm not going to sit on this one unless somebody else sits on it, so, trying to step back a little bit.
But I feel uncomfortable, you're not going to bid it out, you're just going to go negotiate? Is that?
As, as a pri, as a private company, we can do, we can do.
That's fine, but it's ARPA money.
When you're doing ARPA funds?
There'll be supervision of it.
Oh, yeah, very much so.
We'll talk about this, they're going to need to get at least a couple of different quotes, you know.
Oh, there'll be quotes, right.
Yeah, I'll make a note of that, too, so I'll check.
We'll, we'll make sure that everything is done properly regarding ARPA.
Questions? Comfortable? I guess have you set the uh the agenda for the public meeting in your head yet? Will the Ambulance Association be expected to make a presentation there, or will you make presentations and everything that people can ask?
We'll, we'll make a presentation.
You, you select me?
Yes, the board is not going to make a presentation, and then uh.
If there's questions?
I'm going to invite everyone that's, that's on the list to, to come and defend their request. To answer questions, probably a nicer way to say it, but you know. If anyone has any questions that I can't answer, they could be, go right to the source.
Alright, thank you.
Okay.
Much appreciated. You're certainly invited to stay and watch your government work.
I've been up since, uh, well, last night and then one o'clock this morning to work, so far I'm still. I know ambulance.
It's the reason you want to stop and watch your government work.
Well, I appreciate it, and what you guys do too, so thank you very much.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Alright, item four, audience of citizens. They're all citizens, but there's an opportunity for other citizens to speak. Hearing none, Tommy, this is it, number five, you.
Right here, it's your board. Hopefully, everyone has the report, uh, it is sent out by Kathy, uh, and also I just handed it out, so. So we'll start off with the, the general fund account, uh, balance, you'll see here, nine million, six sixty-five, nine eighty-two. Um, I do subtract out the two thousand twenty-two capital improvements borrow, because really, that's a holding account, that was a loan, it's a holding account, uh, and until disbursements are made from that account, so I just take that away. So realistically, our, our balance is, uh, when we take that away, is eight million, four ten, six fifty-one. And if I compare it to last month, or actually on January eighteenth, uh, when the last report was generated, um, we're up two million, six twenty-four, nine fifty-four, uh, from that period. A lot of that has to do, of course, tax revenues coming in, and also, uh, we did receive our second installment of the uh ECS, uh, ECS monies, that's the education equalization grant monies, uh, that we did receive on January thirty-first. Um, and also, if you look on the bottom of the report, uh, our total balances, eleven million, eight ninety-eight, three eighty-six, and what I do with that, I, I subtract the capital improvement borrows and also the uh ARPA monies, uh, from that to get a more, again, a more realistic balance. So having, when I do that, we're at nine million, three twenty-nine, one thirty-eight, and we're up, uh, two million, five twenty-six, two sixty-seven from, uh, January eighteenth. And again, so a lot of that has to do with what I just said with the, with the taxes and the, uh, and the ARPA monies. Um, just, just looking at interest rates, um, and, and actually, I, I pulled out the, we're, we're going to be going over this anyway, the revenue, uh, that's very, very interesting, because we have, regarding short-term investments, um, we had budgeted nine, uh, nine thousand dollars for, for interest. Um, and last year at this time, uh, we had collected seven thousand, eighty-seven dollars and sixteen cents. This, uh, this time, we're up to, uh, forty-one thousand, four sixty-eight, ninety-three, so we're actually, there's an increase of thirty-two thousand, four sixty-eight, ninety-three. So that just tells you what, uh, interest rates will do for you. So, so that's a, you know, definitely a good, good sign there. Um, the capital improvements borrow, again, like I said, that's a holding account, uh, until disbursements are made, and that was, uh, where we had borrowed a million, four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars on, on June eighth, um, and we borrowed that money from Dine Bank. Um, there's only been one real disbursement, major disbursement that's been made on that account, and that was, uh, I've said this before, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars uh progress payment made on the pumpered contract to fire truck. Um, we do get interest on that money, so we've, uh, actually accrued five thousand, two hundred and fifty-six dollars and twenty-three cents in, in, in interest. So in fact, the interest rate actually on, on, uh, November twenty-first was point nine five, and it went up on twelve twenty-seven of twenty-two to two point four seven percent. Uh, wire transfers, I've made, actually, there's been two wire transfers made since January eighteen, since the last report. Uh, there was a transfer I made, uh, one transfer on that day before I went on vacation for, uh, six hundred thousand, and then Jane Mather, who's the assistant treasurer, she was, uh, filling in for me, she made a transfer on, uh, February second of two million, three hundred thousand. So there's been two transfers made of totaling two million, nine hundred thousand dollars. Um, and that money went from our Citizens Bank General Fund to the Liberty Bank, uh, we have a municipal sweep money market account that pays two point four seven percent interest. Just regarding the ARPA, ARPA funds, uh, total that was actually allocated to the town of Deep River was a million, three fourteen, nine oh eight, forty-four. We have gotten, uh, uh, one thousand, eight dollars and thirty-four cents to date in, in interest, so our total with interest is a million, three fifteen, nine sixteen, seventy-eight. Um, I see there's only been one disbursement that's, uh, been made, um, on twelve fourteen for two hundred and forty-nine thousand, forty-three dollars and fifty-five cents to Communications Plus LLC, and I think that has to do with, uh, the radio system projects for the ambulance and whatever. Um, that has not cleared yet, so, uh, we still have the same amount of money in that account, but having said that, uh, you know, we can take two hundred and forty-nine thousand away from that. So the remaining to be dispersed, remaining amount was a, it's about a million, sixty-six thousand, eight hundred and seventy-three dollars. I did, I did look at that, uh, report that came out, I think, on Angus, you probably put together regarding the ARPA request on January tenth. It looks like there were like nineteen requests, um, totaling a million, eight twenty-six, oh seventy-nine, oh.
That's part of our dilemma, is.
Yeah, we'll have to shave, shave some. Um, and then regarding the, uh, education equalization grant monies, uh, for the fiscal year, uh, we're supposed to receive a million, six seventy-one, four fifty-seven. We have received our, the first, and it comes in three installments. Uh, we receive a quarter of the monies on October thirty-first, that was four seventeen, eight sixty-four. Just this January thirty-first, we received the same amount of money, so to date, we've received eight thirty-five, seven twenty-eight. And then on April thirtieth, um, we'll receive the other half, so it'll be, um, eight thirty-five, seven twenty-nine. Uh, just wanted to, especially for regard to Mike and Carol, just the debt service that the town of Deep River has, um, the, the capital improvements borrow, again, that was the Dine Bank that I just went over, that's, uh, for a million, four twenty-five. Um, that closed on June eighth, uh, it was for fifteen-year term, uh, three point two five oh percent interest, fixed interest rate. Um, we actually pay, uh, principal and interest payment on, um, eight fifteen, and then we pay an interest, just an interest payment on, uh, two fifteen, so, um, so the, and the principal and interest payment is over a hundred and three thousand dollars, and just the interest payment would come to twenty-one thousand, six twelve. So, um, we've, we've got a few years to go on that, since it just, uh, just opened pretty much, and our, um, principal balance on that is a million, three thirty now. We do have, uh, through the USDA Department of Agriculture, we have our Kirtland River Street Sewer Project, uh, that originated, um, uh, in two thousand sixteen for two million, nine ten at two point six two five percent fixed interest rate. We do pay on annual principal and interest payment of a hundred and eighteen thousand, three seventy-nine on that. Um, to date, we've made seven, seven payments, um, and that's a forty-year term, so it goes from two thousand sixteen to two thousand fifty-five, um, and our, we've reduced our principal by two hundred and sixty-nine thousand, seventy-three dollars. Uh, and we also have a Kirtland River Streets, uh, Sewer Project Expansion, uh, through the USDA, and that opened on June, uh, twenty-third of two thousand seventeen for six hundred and five thousand, at two point two five percent, forty years, uh, is a term. We've made six payments on that and, uh, reduced, reduced the principal, uh, right now, it's at five hundred and fifty-five thousand, three eighty-four, so it's reduced the principal by about forty thousand dollars. We paid twenty-three thousand, ninety-nine dollars in principal and interest payments, and, uh, those are due, uh, June, June twenty-third will be the next, next payment. So we've got thirty more payments remaining on that. And the last, uh, we have a Deep River Elementary School boiler payment with Dine Bank, uh, that originated, um, July two thousand sixteen, a seven-year term for two hundred thousand dollars. Uh, we actually have our final payment due on July twenty-ninth for twenty-eight thousand, five hundred and seventy-four dollars. Um, so I think that pretty much covers what I have to say.
So Tom, do the, let's do the math together. The town of Deep River has seven thou, seven million, seven million, one five four, you add the others, what's that give us, about eight, eight million, eight and a half million? The town itself, not, let's not include the capital improvements. And you're saying we're going to get from the state and others, so what does that give? Is approximately not town, approximately nine million dollars?
Yes.
And my, uh, don't go on Jeopardy and use this answer, but we have an eighteen million dollar budget, twelve divided means on average, we spend about a million and a half a month? Four months left, six million dollars, and that leaves us about the three million that we think we have in surplus. Do not go on Jeopardy with those numbers. Very quick math, all I just think is, we're doing okay with.
Yeah, I think we're, yeah, doing very well, actually, yeah.
The only thing I want to ask you, Tom, is to pay attention to that, um, interest rate on the capital improvements borrow, that can't go over three.
Oh, okay.
That goes over three, we need to move it somewhere.
Oh, I'm glad you told me that, yeah.
Who's the number that can't go over three?
Can't go over three, that's the interest that we're paying, and we can't.
Okay.
We can't make more money.
Oh, it's great to get four interest, but.
Uh, and, and we are all waiting on the, uh, the auditors to finish our, uh, our audit. Uh, the only reason I bring it up is you remember, we have created a new capital improvement fund, so I believe that what we have had for years, a capital non-recurring account, twenty-six thousand dollars, we should probably move that into the general fund, uh, assume, but, uh, so, to be, uh, yeah, and Angus and I, and Angus will always nod when I say this. They, auditors promised that that, that our, uh, our, uh, audit would be done in December, and here we are, headed into March, but.
Yeah.
Other than saying it, I don't know what's going to make any difference, so, alright, thank you, Tom.
Thanks.
Alright, uh, let's call it recommendations from selectmen, although I have an idea what Angus is going to talk about, he won't have recommendations, but there will be updates.
Right, now a couple of recommendations. The one, just to follow right up on what Tom's report, um, out of the capital improvements borrow, we, we will see a, a payment made for our plow truck. If you live in the areas that Jeffrey plows, you would have seen the brand-new plow out this morning, um, overnight, so we, we took delivery of that about a month ago and made payments on it about a month ago.
They didn't ask for a simultaneous payment, uh?
No, they gave us the truck and said, you owe us this. Just like the old days.
And fire, well, we're on the subject of those who, uh, you know, fire department is not asking for any status payments on that truck?
No, I haven't heard anything recently about that.
Well, we did, we had an excellent timing on our borrowing, I'm a little uncomfortable with the Maggie who did dollars, but once again.
No, it's, it's, it's kind of frustrating on that, but things are, things are going to start, I think we're going to start seeing things start coming into, into play now. There it is.
The car truck exists.
Oh, there it is. Yeah, where, where is it?
That's at that Gallons Night.
Okay.
Here in Connecticut, but I, I have, I have a couple of three pictures, if anybody wants to, it does exist.
How much is that plow truck?
The plow truck was a hundred and ninety-seven thousand, and then there was, uh, a coup, other, other improvements that we had to, uh, pay for the plow, you know, the things that go on top of the plow and the, and the different, different things that go on to it. But, uh, the truck, the, the check that came out of this payment was a hundred and ninety-seven thousand.
Okay.
The other thing to talk about, I guess, would be Bud and I visited the Board of Education, one of their budget workshops. Um, well, we don't have any final numbers, because they haven't determined yet what they're going to be, it looks as if we're going to, if we go K through twelve, including supervision, it looks as if we're going to start our budget with a seven hundred and eighty thousand dollar increase, just on K through twelve, Region Four and, and the elementary school.
We should give them some minor credit, they started at nine hundred.
They started at nine hundred and eighty thousand dollars, and I think Bud's, Bud's emotional plea at the meeting might have, uh, no, it wasn't a plea so much, it's just an expression.
It might be, you've got to give us emotions, we might as well use it, but we didn't smell it, that's normal.
Um, may have had something to do with it, we have had subsequent meetings with the superintendent and, uh, and some Board of Education representatives. I don't know that, I don't think we're going to see much more of a decrease in this, I think the elementary school is, is where they are, which is in, I, I don't have the numbers, uh, but around a two hundred thousand dollar increase, most of which is, um, is contractual. And the, Region Four mostly boils down to, um.
ADM.
ADM. And, and, you know, I can understand that, and I, I totally get the numbers, and, and the, the population, it's driven, this is how it's worked forever, but when you see a six hundred and seventy thousand dollar increase in their spending. But when you see a six hundred and seventy thousand dollar increase in their spending, and you see the increase from Deep River, six hundred and seventy thousand dollars, it's like, come on. It's just, so there's nothing to say about it yet, other than just to make you aware. But we're going into our workshops, you're gonna see, we have, we're gonna have our work cut out for us this year to, to try and make up for that.
Is there any conversations? I was on the board for ever and ever and ever, and we talked about regionalization. Is there any further conversations, because these schools are getting, I mean, they're empty, buildings are almost empty.
Well, you know, that's, that's, it's an interesting question. There is always conversation, the Board, the three first select people, and the superintendent meet once a month, and that we always talk about regionalization. There is more of a need, and there's more, there's more evidence that we can put in front of the, all of the population and say, this is, this is what it's costing us to keep all of these five schools going. You know, when we could, it could be three schools or four schools, you know, we need to figure out how to do it. But yes, there is a continuing conversation about regionalization. This is an interesting study in a process like ADM, or a method of payment that's based on ADM. Whereas Deep River lost, I think it, up at John Winthrop and Valley Regional, we lost eleven kids. But Chester lost twenty-one kids, and Essex lost forty kids. So Essex is still paying more than we are, even after we jump up seven hundred thousand dollars. But it's just, it's just a matter of numbers, and, and next year, I think Chester will get hit, because we're gonna have a big drop.
That's gonna be my question, when you meet, when you meet with a selectman and the other, and the superintendent, I know, like, we all sat on the Board of Education, and they used to give us projections.
Yeah.
Just so we can try to project, again, it's not gonna be exact, but that's a big, a big jump. You know, yes, they can give us deep rivers, but what's gonna happen with Chester's projections or Essex's projections?
Well, that's, that's been going quite a bit through my head since, since this first came out. Could we have seen this coming? Probably, maybe not to the dollar, but we could have seen it coming. But what would we have done? Would we have, would we have budgeted three hundred thousand dollars for next year, you know, last year, so that we could put it aside?
Probably not, but.
Yeah.
It's nice to see a bullet coming out of your works behind you.
A hundred percent, I get that. And, you know, and that's, those are the things that, that really, I don't know what we would have done or what we could have done, other than to know that it was coming, and not be knocked off of our chairs like, like we are. It's a big, it's a big hit for us, we, we've worked, this, this board and, and this board have worked really hard, and the population has, has accepted our work efforts to put a, to get our, our surplus to where it needs to be. And we're in a good enough position where I had, actually had lots of plans to bring, you know, pave, pave a few more roads, put some additional funds into some of our capital, and some of our public service stuff. But I, I've had to go back and pull a lot of that out, so we'll, we'll see where we go. But that's just a heads up, we'll see, we'll start our workshops in a couple of weeks, and then we go, away we go, so.
Actually, is it next week we start?
I don't know, oh, yeah, it is, holy natural, yeah, next week, yeah, I thought it was still two.
March Madness.
Yeah.
And Angus said to me his first draft, and I have not looked at it, but we will be ready with something on the seventh, so.
Oh, yeah, we'll, we'll start, I think.
Just catching the numbers from the occasion.
Fire department coming on the seventh, or the fourteenth?
I'd have to look at my.
Yeah, I think the seventh will be just us, and then we have the fire department coming in.
No, there is someone on the seventh, I just can't remember.
Is there?
There might be two.
I don't know, did you actually put into perspective, the magnitude the school is looking for, seven seventy. It's about a mill and a half.
It's a mill and a half, yeah, that's where we start. That, that's where we start. It's a, it's a, it's a heck of a, heck of a couple of months we've got ahead of us.
What's a mill and a half?
Five hundred and change, five fifty.
And you'll see it when we get together, the mill, the tax base, which we thought, the tax base has gone up by, Angus, about two million dollars.
Yeah, our, our, right.
Seventy-five thousand dollars of increase, so you will see all this when we get there, so.
Yep.
No sense taking the surprise when you get there.
Keep that in mind when Region Four's budget comes up for referendum.
Yeah, but we always lose.
Additionally, Region Four is going to put on the, on the referendum.
Oh, yeah. Go ahead.
Oh, well, sorry.
I don't know if you should start.
They are seeking, I don't remember the number, they're seeking authority to enter into a debt, long-term, long-range borrowing, that will allow them to improve, correct, to make better of their, their playing fields.
Athletic, yes.
Athletic.
And that's not, that's not based on nothing, that they, this was planned, they, they paid off, Region Four, I say they, we have paid off the last major debt. The bond that we took out for the improvements at John Winthrop, I think.
Both are.
Both schools, right. So that's paid off, and, and they're, and the proper thing to do is to move in another, another capital bond, so.
Excellent, did bring that one up.
Yeah.
All right, any thoughts, any questions for Angus? Let's take a stroll through the monthly budget reports, hopefully you are all receiving them. Since Tom got us excited about the amount of revenue, let's start with revenues, and we'll take a short stop to revenues. As Tom, Tom, did you point out, we, the town collects revenues, July and January. In July, we collect every motor vehicle, personal property, et cetera, but we do collect a substantial amount in January, which is why we have substantial amounts of dollars now. And you can see that we have, we've almost collected everything we assume we're going to collect. We've got one point seven two that is yet to be collected, I assume that will come in soon, or we'll collect it next year. But if you drop down, if you look at property taxes in arrears, those folks who forgot to pass in the past, we had budgeted a hundred and twenty, we have already received two hundred and four, two hundred and five, so that is positive news. Those who get around to paying is late are charged an interest fee. We, we assumed fifty-seven five, we have already collected one oh two seven, so these are all positive, but I think. Motor vehicle supplements, those who have a car that comes in after the grant list was established, we estimated a hundred and twenty, hundred and twenty-seven has come in. So all those numbers are positive, that our cash flows are coming in well. And let's, and, and let's, and while Tom gives credit to the interest market, look at our short-term debt, we budgeted nine, and Tom has got his forty-one. So I say, let's give all that credit to Tom. Just, just my, just my opinion, all right, Tom was too humble. There's a couple of other things we could spend time going through, but unless anyone has anything specifically, I believe we are doing, we are doing well with our revenues. I do wish to remind you that we will have, we are collecting in revenues about eighteen million dollars, we are expending about nineteen million dollars. It was intentional that we took, we pulled money out of our surplus to meet some of this year's expenditures, so you should not be surprised, they don't match. Since we're on the subject, and we'll get to it in a moment, notice the Public Safety Police. To date, we have collected ninety-six thousand, five hundred and forty-three dollars in revenues from contractors who have our constables stand outside. When we get to expenditures, we will see that, I believe the number's about sixty-five, we have paid out to our constables. So there is some revenues that comes to the town, which makes sense, because they're in a car that is paid for by the town, they're in gas that's paid for by the town. The individual is paid by the town, the town meets its social security that also qualifies them for pension, so it is logical that we should collect in excess, and we seem to be doing okay there, so. Unless there's any questions on revenue, let's go over to expenses. There is a great temptation on my part to tell those who are recent members of our board that there are stories behind each one of these numbers. Does any of you remember Naked City? This is just one, one story in the Naked City. We could tell lots of stories about each of these numbers, but I'll get too excited, when we get to the budget workshop, we will do that. Right now, it is, we'll just look at where we are exposed in this budget, all right, and let's look at, so we are in the eighth month, which would suggest we have spent, if everything is on a straight line, not always true. About sixty-six percent of everything has been spent, leaving about thirty-three left. So if we use thirty-three as an indicator of what we should talk about, I think we're good on everything. And again, anyway, if you have a question, call it out, I will not. But engineering services were under pressure, Angus was using them out at the, at the transfer station, and you will continue to, as your direction to me, okay? But other than that, I think the selectmen's budget's doing fine, as does the election budget, other than you'll notice that printing expense is extremely low. We'll have another election, the school referendum, but I imagine the total will be okay, we may be over in that budget.
Bud, 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 on the.
Here is the, the place to focus.
One hundred percent left, still in our budget, the expenses in which there are one hundred percent unspent. For example, the, the Economic Development Commission.
There is, Angus could take it from there. I'm surprised that there is only a hundred percent left, because they are actively doing things, aren't they?
The grant writer.
Grant writer, we haven't used a grant writer this year.
School meetings, there are four pieces that have not been expended yet. Do they stay in the budget?
I think so, yeah.
Well, there's still four months left.
Okay, four months left, yeah.
Yeah, I can, I can tell you for sure that the Economic Development Commission money will be spent.
Was it Dad Russell in charge yet?
No, no, Russell resigned from that commission quite a while ago, really only after a couple of months. What's, what else we got there? Yeah, the grant writer, actually, I was speaking with someone the other day to try to help us out with some grants, so I imagine we're gonna spend a good portion of that. Sustainability, we just made a payment on something, I don't think it was fifteen hundred dollars, but they're spending, union negotiations.
Our budget, you're paying, so I assume a lot of that will come from what you're doing up at the transfer station.
Yeah, yep.
The state, the grant pays for some of that?
Grant pays for almost all of that.
Okay, so we will probably still have our funds?
There, yeah, yep, I can't remember what it was that they, that we just sent a check out for, but it's, it's had something to do with it. Union negotiation reserve, that, that won't be, that won't be spent, yeah.
They have all been redistributed, if you remember, we didn't have that number, we put the budgets, we put in this line item, we have been redistributed amongst all the other salaries. So it's a bit deceiving. I think the one we ought to focus on is town hall operations, fuel, oil, buildings.
Yep, that's something to pay attention to. And we talked about that when the budget was being prepared, we took a guess a minute what the cost of fuel was gonna be, and we increased that quite a bit, if I remember.
And it's more than just heating, now we're going into a season where we should not have, it's been a mild winter, too, hasn't it?
Yep, no, we've done well, we've been lucky. But this is not just heating oil, this is the heating oil, this is propane, or the, the natural gas is also the fuel for the, for the fire trucks, for the police cars, for our town crew.
Natural gas over at the, the school, we pay for that?
No, the school pays for that, but we, we pay for, I mean, we, we pay for it individually, yeah, but, no, we pay for the natural gas in the town hall, for the natural gas.
We natural gas here?
Yep, and at the library, we had to commit, when the gas came through, we had to commit to.
Oh, that's right, okay, we're the anchors, that's correct, yes, okay, we converted over. All right, is anyone else, I mean, there's telephone service seems to be up at the telephone, yeah, I guess everybody, the telephone service seems to be under pressure. Twenty-three percent, twenty-four percent we spent?
Yeah.
Is that a monthly fee or fee?
Yeah, that, we'll see, we'll see what that.
Is that usage, or is it a flat fee?
No, it's a flat fee, so I'm not sure why, well, I'm not sure why, we certainly will look into what that's about, it's probably a miscalculation on what the contract was, with the, with the conversion of the new phones last year.
All right, I see, again, everyone else seems to be on budget, so I won't take much time. Special services, let's stop on copier expenses, just every year, no matter how much we increase that, seems to come in under, it's tight, so it is, so keep, we'll keep our eye on it. Let's revisit, oh, no, we won't revisit within long, newsletter is being used, you intend to put another newsletter out?
Yeah, there will be one coming out in April.
I did not bring to your attention, when we were in revenues, we have rolled in approximately, currently about fourteen thousand dollars. We had a discussion during the workshop that the newsletter, and in its current form, would probably cost the town more than we raised in revenues, so it is proving correct. We did a chat about that in the budget. And Angus just reminded us again, special services, we have a contingency, which is pretty much depleted, would you remind us what is depleting that?
Well, contingency this year, we took a lot of, we spent, I don't have the numbers, but we put a lot of money from contingency into the, the seventy-fifth anniversary celebration of the.
I knew that was in there.
The parade, the parade in particular is what cost us some, some good, good funds, good portion of that.
In addition to that, that's the, you have to put up, we store people's, those who are falling.
Yeah, 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 that's, that's, that's a little deceiving, Bud, we have a particular house that was, that, I think we had to do an eviction. We're paying the storage, and then we get reimbursed from the, from the person. So it's, it's in this line, but it's not, it's a wash for us, we're not paying, we're not losing any money on that, it's just, you see that, it drives those expenses.
Let's go to planning and zoning, which is a hangs, there's a, there is a mistake, we have a contract with consultants for the planning and zoning, and it looks like we've overtake them.
No.
We also have a plan of development with them, I think they're in.
That's, that's exactly what's happening, yeah.
So there was two lines, Angus and I went over this on Monday, and Angus has worked with Kathy, and I think there's a miss, so I think we'll find.
Oh, yeah, we just, you know, they're, they're only sending us one bill.
Oh.
That, that includes, and not separating them out, so that's why that is, that'll be repaired next month, we'll see.
Police, when you get to police, unless there's anyone to start earlier, we have paid out seventy-nine thousand dollars to the constables that have stood on our street. If you remember, we have collected ninety-five, so that seems to be what we expected, although I would love to get it out of our budget, because it's so distorted.
Well, well, next time we talk with the accounts, we can talk about them.
That seems to me that we're losing money by renting them out.
No.
Making money.
No, I wouldn't suggest that we're making money.
But we're not breaking even, because if you think about social security and all the benefits.
No, we're definitely better than breaking even.
Are we?
Yeah, absolutely.
Leading in that direction, although I would really like to have.
We can break that.
Yeah, we collected, we spent, so we paid out seventy-six, we've collected ninety-five, and to your point, we've got car, gas, social security, and pension in there. And I think it's covered by the, the difference, I would like, I don't know.
Well, we'll break it out as much as we can, you know.
It's probably more worth than it's worth, but I'm just thinking that it's probably.
I get it.
Barely breaking even.
Years ago, that was a real money, it was, it was used as a money maker, but we don't try to do that anymore.
Highway department seems to be doing fine. What was that, highway, a tree removal, that is another one that is inaccurately.
No, I, I think that, that's fine, that is, it is, we went over on that with a, a big tree from actually one of our, of our former members. There's a monstrous tree in front of his house, had to bring a crane in to take it, take it down. Had to shut, that, actually, we had to pay for some police protection on that, because they had to close Kelsey Hill for a little bit.
So this will probably go over budget then?
That, we're not gonna, you know, we're not gonna hit that anymore, that, it is over budget now by two thousand, three hundred, and it's gonna stay over budget.
That's what I'm saying, because we saw four months of more trees to come down.
Yeah. Yeah.
Uh, I think that is all that I thought were worthy to bring to your attention. Um, where do we sit, Angus, on parks and rec, the maintenance all fields, we're over by fifteen, are you happy? I thought there was a miss.
No, I'm looking into that, I have that here, I just haven't had a chance before this meeting to get to that.
Certainly, I would.
I don't, I don't think that that's correct.
I think, as we go into the spring, you're going to certainly incur costs of that line.
Yeah, yep.
I think there is also a mistake in the new debt that Tom was explaining there, if you look at the new debt, on the redemption of debt, we have overpaid, well, that's not overpaid, whatever we budgeted, we have spent more than what we budgeted, which doesn't make sense to me, so I think there is a mistake there.
Yeah, and I have that marked to, to find out about.
Uh, capital, we, most of our capital will be initiated, the tasks that will be initiated in the spring, so that will be happening soon. Fire department, where are they on their, these are the doors, correct, fifty-nine thousand for the doors up in Winter? You still have.
Uh, no, thirty-two was for the doors, um, seventeen was for something else, I, I.
Was it glass?
No, it was a boat, that was right, yeah. They repowered the boat.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Are they, was it, was that being renovated, or they were buying another?
No, they bought a new engine, yeah. Um, yes, there is, we, we do have to come up with a solution for the, for the windows at the.
And it looks like they have purchased and we have paid for the breeding apparatus.
Yeah.
All right, and the other, uh, windows, the library, they will do those in the spring.
They will do those in the spring, yeah.
And we'll take the windows out, and a new road up at the transfer stations in the spring as well, as is the oil containment project, which we're required to do. Uh, I, there's lots of stories in here, but I do believe we're okay on the expenditures as well. I just remind you that you will see the expenditures exceed revenues, and that was intentional. We took about six-hundred-and-ninety thousand dollars out of the surplus left here. And again, when we get our, get our audit, we'll see what our surplus is, but I think it will be adequate. All right, so that, that is sort of everything that we need to discuss tonight. Uh, Schuys and I did place on the agenda, did anyone wish to carry on any additional conversations about ARPA? Questions, where we're going, next steps, you want to have any thoughts?
I do.
Please.
So, um, I actually did a spreadsheet on it, is, I, with all the requests that have been put in, we're about five-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars over the amount of money that we have. And, um, if the assumption that you had made last summer holds true of spending fifty percent on capital, twenty-five percent on social services, and twenty-five percent on economic recovery, um, that leaves like a hundred-and-sixty thousand, a hundred-and-sixty-five thousand left in capital. And I just wondered if a way to approach the rest, and I'm not sure what your thoughts were, is to decide what, what's going to be cut out, because I worried that when, when we worked on it on the fourteenth, is we approved a lot of things, but there's going to be things at the end of the list that might be important, that we're never going to get to unless we start to eliminate a half a million dollars' worth of requests first. So that's just my thought.
Those are good questions, um, that I, you know, I don't have a real answer for, I mean, most, most communities have done it just the same way that we are, you know, when the requests come in, they, they work and prioritize the requests, try to get them out. We're, we've talked about just about all of the requests that have come in, uh, there are a couple more, there are a couple more that are, that I've been working on. And we're just gonna have to do, go through the same process, there, I think that you can be sure that we will find, there, there, there is going to be more demand for money than we have. The, the struggle is prioritizing, right? And that's, that's what our jobs are. I don't have an answer for you as far as, you know, we, we can, I would suggest that we have another special meeting, so we don't take up, you know, a whole meeting here, and we can go over these other ones, but we're not quite ready to make recommendations to you yet.
Because there's less than six-hundred thousand left, so there's not a lot of money left.
Well, six-hundred thousand is almost half of what we've got, so.
But it worries me that there's a lot of requests out there.
It's, 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 it's okay, because, pardon?
A more request coming in?
Yeah, yeah, more expenditures and, and more social services stuff mostly, but, but,
Is there gonna be a time where we just, you just?
Well, we're, you know, when we're out, that's it. I think when we're out, I think we need to continue to.
So the meeting that's coming up on the thirteenth, uh, what, uh, what are actually gonna, what, what are the, any of these are gonna be?
There were seven, I think six or seven that got moved forward. Why don't you tell us out loud some points, so we can just talk about it.
Tri-Town New Services.
Yep.
Shoreline Soup Kitchen, Middlesex Health Center for Behavioral Health, um, Diver Social Services, Historical Society.
No, no, I think Social Services got tabled.
Got tabled, okay. I don't have my nose as well, I'm just trying to. Historical Society.
Yep.
Ambulance.
And ambulance, yeah.
And, um, current comments.
And current comments, yeah.
A current comment, wasn't on this list, again.
Those are the, those are the ones, Tom, that we, and then the Board of Finance approved to go to town meeting on the third, those are gonna be those specific ones at town meeting on the thirteenth.
Okay.
Would it be something to think about, since there's a seven-hundred-dollar increase request for education, to maybe hold off on some of the other ARPA requests until we figure out where we're going with the budget?
You can't use ARPA for budget.
For any, any, any holes there are left?
No. There are, there are, there are a few things that we cannot use it for, and that's, you know, using it for regular budgeted items, you can't use it to reduce debt, you can't use it for budget items, things like that.
Are there, coming at it from a different direction, is there any projects on the list that the selectmen have decided, just not going to do, have you done it?
I would suggest, I would suggest that each individual has their own thoughts on how we can trim, but we have not made any decisions on that yet, that's gonna be probably our next meeting, we're gonna go over some of that. And depending on agenda items, we may make that a special meeting, but I think we'll probably try to, we'll try to, at least this quarter cycle, we'll try to do our, our decision-making at our regular meetings, so that we generally can be broadcast and all that kind of thing.
What are your thoughts? Jackie will do it again, if you have a question. You gave us direction, the three buckets, and you put a percent-ish, are those percents still sort of holding fifty for capital?
I haven't, uh, I haven't broken it out, Jack, I'm, I'm curious to see Jackie's say, but, um, I'm assuming that you will share it with me, but I haven't broken it out. Those percents, I think Jim put it best, it was a fifty percent-ish, those are not cast in stone, they're not, we didn't say this is, this is what we're going to do. It was, it was a thought process, looking at what, what I expected that we were gonna guess, what I, what I knew, um, some of the demands that we were going to be made on this fund. Those were what I thought we could do, and, and, and keep in line with the, with the, the, uh, the mission of the ARPA, uh, the Affordable, or what's the word?
American.
The American Raska Plan, the, the, yeah, for the purpose of that, but also the general use of it for smaller towns, capital is a major part of what we can spend on, and I think we, I think we have an opportunity, uh, to, to do both, and that was the idea of this. Those percentages were, were a guideline, if you will, nothing that was set in stone.
And that's what we said, when I went back to the minutes to find what it was, I was like, we're thinking this, it wasn't absolute.
Did that before.
What is your, you can put us in there if you want to, your obligation, after an award is made, for instance, the question, are we going to bid out the ambulance, just an example, is the Historical Society going to bid it out? My understanding, they have bid those things out, do you have, do we have, does town policy come in, does ARPA policy come in, how do we know that we're getting the best deal possible?
No, we, we will, um, ensure that each recipient follows the, the guidelines of, the ARPA distribution, uh, which is the same guidelines as the community. But when we make a donation, this money will go to the ambulance association for a purpose. I don't think that we are quite as obligated to go to, to bid. I want them to, to get, um, estimate, you know, cost estimates, and do the, do the proper, proper channels to ensure that they get the best money for the, best bang for their buck, but not, that's not a, I don't believe, and we're just getting into that and learning that now, as to how we, how we, um, document how the money was spent, not just write a check to the ambulance association, I believe that's what happens, is we write a check to the ambulance association, but I'm not a hundred percent certain of that.
Probably the same for Shoreline.
Shoreline Soup Kitchen, we just write, we write a check to them, they put it towards the purchase of it.
If I'm not mistaken, when, with the, with the tanker truck, they went out, the fire department went out and got three different quotes.
Yeah.
And they selected what they thought was the best, and coincidentally, it was the least expensive. It wasn't bids, per se, they, they picked the one that best fit and budgetary and all that kind of stuff, so they might not have done it, you know, the lowest, but, you know, there is that.
Certainly is a fine example, uh, they go through a process, right, and see.
And I would say the ambulance, the ambulance could do it the same way.
Some process.
Yeah, I don't think Rich, um, answered that properly, you know, they're, they're actors, just go to the.
Is that incremental part burden that you have to oversee?
Yeah.
And there's, there will be forms, I mean, I saw that some of the reports, there's a, do we have to have an audit of these periodic audits?
Yes, no, no, we, we already had one, we've, we've already gone through one audit, but at that point, we hadn't spent any money. The next audit that comes up, we will be able to report that we have spent this, and this is how we spent it.
Do our external auditors do it, or another?
We do.
You do?
They will pay, they will pay, they will pay a tax, they will audit it. They will be, they will be part of our audit, it will be part of their audit, but it is not part of, um, their job to document how we, how we do it. We're, just like all of our expenditures, Kathy and Matt will put it in, in the proper logbooks or whatever they do, and then that will go to the auditors at the end of the year, so they can go through it. And if you remember, right, that was, he asked us what he spent on ARPA.
And, and they will, they will. Will we be holding back dollars for, to help you get some assistance for administration or this?
Well, some of this, some of this will, the, the grant for the, that we're suggesting that it didn't go to this one, but the grant to businesses, um, that will be administered by someone outside of the town hall, outside of the town. Part of that fund will go to pay for his services. So when we have outside administration, that, that, we can use that ARPA money to pay for that, too.
Okay, question, thoughts, ARPA?
I, I would suggest those groups that are requesting the grants, I think to this discussion would be helpful for the public, to know that they are going out to bid, that they are doing their due diligence, I think the public will feel more comfortable knowing that they're spending the money wisely, I think they're doing that, I mean, we have to trust these agencies and organizations, but I think they need to hear that.
Sure.
It'll be easier for the public to accept what we're, what we're suggesting.
To, some of these, like the Shoreline Soup Kitchen, they've, they've got a truck in mind, they're just waiting for money, um, waiting for commitment. But the majority of what we've just talked about, none of that is cap, very little of that's capital, I think, you know, when we get into the capital, um, that's when we're gonna be talking about that, and a lot of the capital expenditures are the town, you know, the, the only, the only capital I think we have in this one is the ambulance.
Historical.
And Historical Society, and Historical Society went, they went out and got three bids on the, on the roof. I, I believe that that was long enough ago, that those bids are probably no longer hold, and they'll have to go back to, but they, they made their choice based on three different bids, maybe more, but at least three.
Were there any businesses that actually applied, because what happened with COVID and then, you know, they lost?
They haven't had that opportunity yet, that's what we're trying to do, is to get that funded, so we can set up a fund, yeah.
Yeah, if you haven't gone on vacation, Tom, you'd know that. It's giving your own time. Love you too, Jim.
Observations, thoughts on ARPA, absent any, which I shouldn't jump to, because I would entertain a motion for adjournment. Thank you, sorry, and we will meet next Tuesday, right here, right, March seventh.
I will be elected.
Seven? Tuesday, is it seven, no, can't be seven, seven thirty, when do we meet for?
Um, budget workshop.
Oh, workshop.
Workshop. Is it seven?
Seven or seven thirty?
Seven.
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 Seven's for workshop.
Are we gonna do that from that consultant?
Boy, we're gonna see a lot of each other, huh?
Everybody say hi.
Everybody say hi.
Yes, we will.
Vote on adjournment.
Yes, we will.
Steve, vote, vote on adjournment.
All in favor.
Vote on adjournment.
All in favor.
All in favor.
Oh, I said that, didn't I? Oh, no, all right, all in favor of adjournment, let you say hi, hi, it was in five.